Hello.
Hey Bob, we can hear you.
Good. I can certainly hear you. How are you?
Good, how are you?
We're gonna get going in one minute here.
Okay.
Ashley, you here with us too? Gary?
I'm here.
I'm here.
Hello. All right. Somebody, Michael?
Dr. Brenner, what's the weather there?
Uh, it is presently eighty-two degrees and sunny.
Oh, poor Bob, I'm so sorry for you.
I know, somebody has to do it though.
Oh, well, fingers crossed.
So it's nice and snowy and icy around here today.
Wow, gee, I feel bad I missed it.
I bet you do.
I'll be back in a couple of weeks.
Yes, okay.
I think that's important because we always.
Don't die. You're a kind of concern, so. It's okay.
Not really.
All right, call this meeting to order, roll call please. Dr. Brenner?
Here.
Dr. Katula?
Here.
Mr. Costleton?
Here.
Dr. Schumacher?
Here.
Mr. Sutner? Ms. Shields? Yeah. And Dr. Burke?
Here. Uh, pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Someone read the mission statement?
Hope to be learners who apply skills and experiences from their design.
Yep, and then who have further comments? Dr. Brenner?
Uh huh.
No, 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 okay.
Not at this point. Uh, I would like to make a statement later, but it'll come at the time that Mr. Fortney discusses the insurance thing.
Uh, I know we had a committee of the whole, any updates or follow-through on any of the committees?
Uh, yeah, there's one update that I just wanted the board to be aware of. Uh, we did have a discussion about the creative English program for lengthy discussion, uh, last Monday. Um, at this time, I haven't had a chance to have conversations with the middle school administration and Mike Camp, our English learner coordinator. Uh, we chose to leave it off of the agenda for this week to give more time for consideration of alternative programmings. Uh, but I also wanted the board and the community to be aware that Mr. Camp has worked on with our viable parent advisory committee since October. Uh, having these ongoing conversations, a partnership that we look and wish to continue, uh, to have, and I just wanted the community to know, um, that the decisions and recommendations that are being considered are not done in isolation, but done in collaboration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, many updates? If not, we'll go to the consent agenda and we'll need, um, that entire motion ready, please.
In the minutes of the February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one Board of Education meeting, February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one executive session, March eighth, twenty-twenty-one committee meeting, March eighth, twenty-twenty-one executive session meeting. The activities so important for February twenty-twenty-one, the final bills and claims for February twenty-twenty-one in the amount of seven hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars and nine cents. And the bills and claims for March two, twenty-twenty-one in the amount of, excuse me, one million, two hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven dollars and eighty-nine cents. Order request received March ninth, twenty-twenty-one, responded on March tenth, twenty-twenty-one to Bernadette Soto, a Chicago Regional Council of Carpenters requesting a list of schools that ET Ped perform work on at Yorkville CUSD one fifteen for FY twenty-nineteen. Order request received February eighth, twenty-twenty-one, responded on March tenth, twenty-twenty-one, from Central Polyback, requesting complete tabulation for each line item, contractor award price for each item, in name of contractor that was awarded. Order request received February twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one, responded on March tenth, twenty-twenty-one, from the Chicago Tribune, requesting incidents referred to law enforcement in twenty-eighteen, nineteen, twenty-nineteen, twenty, twenty-one school years by offense, gender and race, and destroy the April twenty-nine, twenty-nineteen executive session required.
So moved in second, additional discussion. Uh, roll call please. Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Mr. Costleton?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Katula?
Yes.
And Dr. Burke? Yes.
Uh, Ashley, yes, I didn't hear you.
All right, and then on to the treasurer reports.
Okay, should be a pretty quick and uneventful report this month. Uh, continue to be happy to report that we're running slightly favorable at revenues and expenses, so slightly higher revenues than we would have anticipated and slightly lower expenses than we would have anticipated. On the revenue side, just a reminder, um, we have received restate payments this year, which is what we had budgeted. Um, so we're looking, we're looking good there. If we get any additional payments that, that would be above budget. And we are seeing really strong transition fees. Uh, we continue to see that hold out from grandparent's work perspective and then as well as throughout the district. So I'll give you an update on those numbers a little bit later in my report. And then federal was slightly behind, but, uh, my Marcus, uh, my team has done great work to get our parent one, uh, kind of grant all shored up and we should be seeing that money, um, shortly, so that'll be two hundred and eighty thousand dollars that we would expect to see in March or April at the latest, so that will be right in line at that rate. From an expense perspective, um, we're slightly favorable, uh, salaries perspective, and there's a lot of puts and takes, you know, there. So we have someone from positions, we have some positions we didn't anticipate, but we're trying to manage that strongly across all positions. Uh, benefits, we're continuing to see some favorability there. Um, but again, that out of the one with what actuaries would expect. We did, uh, have an insurance committee meeting that I've been trying to talk about later, but, uh, we did confirm that, that, you know, there was an expectation that you are building, um, that reserve, and they did say that we've been seeing lower, you know, than anticipated, um, spending, and that, that doesn't necessarily, you know, that doesn't necessarily continue. Um, so we want to make sure again that we have that, um, that we have that reserve in place. On purchase services standpoint, that's probably the area that we're seeing the most favorability, and that's primarily related to transportation. So our general education transportation is pretty consistent with what we expected, but it's our out-of-district special education transportation that's been lower because some of those schools, uh, do not give students the option to return in person. So a lot of those schools are making a little money for a large portion of the year, so we expect to see that favorability. Um, come back a little bit, but there will definitely be a fuller favorability on transportation. And that's obviously the supplies related to, uh, related to that, a little bit lower in supplies, but we've seen a lot of pickup there in the month of March. And, uh, capital, we'll see, uh, we'll see later typically, we spend, uh, at the beginning of the school year and then kind of begin at the end. So, um, working with, um, just to be ready to make sure that we're managing, um, to that number. And then we did talk about, um, transition fees, we have thirty-nine thousand dollars in, uh, transition, general transition fees, which is, um, fairly consistent with what we've been seeing. And then we had, uh, fifty-four thousand this month at, uh, grants or, again, that's revenue to us, we're paying down, um, the debt, but that is, uh, the second highest month of the year. So, um, continues to be a lot of activity. And then, um, with March actual, so next month, we're gonna be providing projections in terms of where we expect to end the year. Those will be used for our, uh, heading of budgets as well. So next month is just gonna probably be used a little bit longer to kind of tell people what we're thinking in terms of where we think we might end the year.
All right, need a motion to approve?
Motion approved, the director of affairs presented.
Second.
Moved in second, additional discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, and then we go on to personal recommendations. And first, we have honorable dismissal of teachers.
Moving motion down your calendar, yes, you're reading.
Just gonna say that.
Okay. Motion to approve the honorable dismissal of the following teachers: Jonah Brandt, Robert Kennedy, Carrie Smith, Caroline Ramirez, April Straight, Tiffany Shue, Carrie Upjohn, and Carolyn Jarrett.
Done. Moved in second, any additional comments? Uh, roll call please. Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Mr. Costleton?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Katula?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
And Dr. Burke? Yes.
And I just wanted to thank these individuals and professionals, um, certainly, you know, they've been a great contribution to us this year. And in the event that we either, in ad section, we, we have people that might be resigning for other reasons, we have a number of individuals that are on the list to be called back, and Troy will oversee that process and communicate with teachers as we move through the screen here.
Thank you.
Uh, then we have some co-curricular resignations.
Motion to approve the co-curricular resignations presented, second.
Moved in second, additional discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, and then we have some co-curricular hires.
Motion to approve co-curricular hires, let's present. Second.
Moved in second, additional discussion, roll call please. Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Mr. Costleton?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Katula?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Dr. Burke? Yes, and then we have some resignations.
Motion to approve the resignations as presented, second.
Moved in second, additional discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, and then last, we have some hires.
Motion to approve the hires, as presented. Second.
Moved in second, additional discussion, roll call please. Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Mr. Costleton?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Katula?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Dr. Burke? Yes. And then, uh, to old business, then we have Yorkville High School Science and English curriculum that we talked about during committee.
Yeah, we discussed this at committee. Uh, we received a motion to approve the curriculum documents, and I want to say my thanks and gratitude to our high school science and English teachers for developing these courses.
Motion to approve the wide just geology, astronomy, transitional English curriculum, as presented, second.
Moved in second, additional pass or discussion? Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Uh, and then we have the Yorkville High School Social Studies Department resources.
This was also discussed at the March eighth Board of Ed meeting. Um, we are not seeking approval, but we are just seeking permission to place this on display. Approval will come later after the thirty days.
And Dr. Ball, this is clarity, the codes are within the executive content, correct?
Uh, yes, sir, the administrative content.
Wonderful, thank you.
Motion to place the wide just social studies resources on display at District one fifteen Administration Center.
Second.
Moved in second, additional discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, and then we have the twenty-one, twenty-two parents-student handbook.
Yes, so there is, has been a little bit of a.
Oh.
Let's do a motion first, then we'll talk about it.
Okay.
Motion to approve the twenty-two, twenty-two parents-student handbook, as presented, second.
Moved in seconded, any additional discussion?
So, I apologize, there has been a little bit of change, um, from our last meeting. The, the last meeting, we discussed having a virtual way of parents to email, um, the school buildings as an attendance line, and we have removed that portion until we do some further, um, research, uh, to decide if, you know, that is the best path to take. So the, the email attendance line has been removed, and then I wanted to follow up, um, with the board. Um, I did have a discussion with the Yorkville Police Department and also our safety and security. Um, I know you had asked questions about the hats and head coverings and what their opinion was, and so both groups, um, had, had the same, same opinion that, um, it, it may cause a little bit of, of more work or difficulty in identifying an individual if they, um, do wear a hat and, you know, do something where we have to investigate, um, but there was not significant concern, but there was some concern that it would cause a little bit more, um, work in determining who the individual was if they're wearing hats or head covering. So I wanted to bring that back and share that with you all.
I think the recommendation is still to allow that to happen in a direct way. Um, if it becomes a problem, obviously, we can, at any point in time, put it in a direction, except, excepting the board.
Okay, so we have the motion, give me a second. Uh, any other comments or discussion? Thank you, Melinda, for following up on those two items. Uh, let's, all, please. Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Mr. Costleton?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Katula?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Dr. Burke? Yes, and then we have the approval of the Yorkville High School roof restoration project.
Motion to approve the proposal from, uh, government commercial broken, try to restore to the piece of, uh, roof according to both sections of the original Yorkville High School roof for the amount of four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, forty-eight dollars. Also authorize the administration a ten percent contingency, uh, to correct any unforeseen conditions during the application.
Second.
Moved in second, additional questions or comments? Roll call please. Mr. Costleton?
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Katula?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
And Dr. Burke? Yes, and then we have approval of custodial supplies, or the custodial supply bid, excuse me.
Motion to award a one-year custodial supply contract with expert chemical supply for custodial supplies during the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year. Second.
Moved in second, any additional questions or comments? Roll call please. Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Mr. Costleton?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Katula?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Dr. Burke? Yes, and then on to new business items, well, programs and staffing.
This is an individual, um, a new item, um, that was briefly discussed verbally at our March eighth board meeting. Um, the summer recall planning committee has met multiple times, uh, evaluating the responses from, um, from our community in order to offer, uh, extended summer programming, um, starting, uh, this summer, starting June. Uh, the group still wants to build upon the pre-pandemic summer offerings, um, that we had in, in twenty-nineteen, and also to some extent in twenty-twenty, but virtually. Um, so the group is recommending that we continue to offer, um, those things such as camp acceleration, camp imagination, the remedial, uh, summer programming from a title-one and from a non-title perspective. But the group is also recommending a few new programs, uh, to start that will mean more time to, uh, remediate and extend instruction and attempts to, um, kind of reduce that learning gap or that learning loss, um, in the, in the form of, uh, mathematics, a bootcamp, uh, mathematician, mathematicians program, and also, um, probably transitions and a jumpstart program to help lead, um, the non-academic, social, emotional needs of our, of our community. Um, and so I, I do believe that Dr. Schumpert is providing to you some data and some information.
For the, those that are on the wait list, if you look back on the supercut update, there's a parent survey result that you can access in the board list and post that you have top of the year, to the left of your tab that I marked for you as a hard copy. Um, towards the back of the packet, um, about four pages from the end, it just gives a, a breakdown of those parents who are looking for, uh, some of that, there are learning opportunities as well as non-academic summer up to be programs for students. So if you look to the back of that parent survey, you'll find some of that data that supports some of the work that Dr. Ball and his team are trying to put together this summer.
And that, that was one of the, um, data points and sets that the committee used to make the recommendation. Things in addition to what we've done in the past, like the elementary interest in starting an elementary choir. Um, there is interest in having a different type of, um, wellness groups for our seventh through eleventh grade students, uh, which is outlined in the report. At this time, I'm not seeking, uh, approval of the programming, but I would, uh, ask you if the board, um, would give us permission to then begin the process of, of recruiting, not only staff members, um, but recruiting, uh, students that would roll in the program itself. And the reason being is because of the timing that someone wants to communicate with our families. I, I would absolutely advocate for this for sure, to, I, this is a great, great opportunity for our students in the district at, at all levels, and I, I would absolutely advocate to, to, to do what you just said, Nick, to, to start looking for students who are interested and to start finding the staff and to make sure these programs can go.
And we would, we'll bring it back to the board for official approval, but we also want to seize their interest, because if there's no interest, probably it's a waste of board's time, or maybe we need to refocus on our efforts to somebody else or, um, different ideas.
And to Dr. Burke's point last week, you know, we, we also need to understand that there's student interest in these programs, but also we have, uh, staff that's interested in order to staff.
Yeah, 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 and you need time to be able to evaluate that.
Sure.
And then communicate, and, and we know we have students who maybe could not participate the way they wanted to over the school year, but they're eager to get back to some sense of honesty, so.
Absolutely.
Sooner the better.
No question.
All right, um, and then.
Thank you, Dr. Ball.
Yeah, thank you very much. And, uh, wonderful response from the parents as well, so it's.
Yes, a great thanks to get twenty-three hundred responses.
Yes, absolutely, so, um, really appreciate that, that level of engagement. And then last, we have some revised IDPH ISBE updates.
Yeah, last week, um, the, a lot of, the state board in IDPH came out with some revision. Uh, wanted required schools to do all the things that we've been doing with PPE, social distancing, all our cleaning efforts. Um, so hand washing, those things that we've had in place in Salkin, so that really didn't impact us at all. Uh, what did change is the recommendation for the, the guidelines allowing three to six feet for social distancing. Um, if you're unvaccinated staff member, uh, then six feet is, is the expectation for when all individuals, any individuals who wear masks for eating. Um, bus capacity has always been at fifty, which are jamming fifty. Um, and there is, there was some options for those districts who want to provide a remote instruction, which we're already doing. We're not asking to change anything with our remote instruction till the end of the year, so that was, we got it, it really didn't impact us, um, moving forward. What we want to do from here, we have a staff meeting, uh, just tonight, for employees interested, we got about, about close to two hundred that attended, um, where we, we talked through this a little bit with them as well as gave them an update on our transition plan for next year. After tonight, we'd like to send a communication out to our families, asking if we have any students that would like to come in, um, in person, that aren't early, or we might have some that are hybrid and want to go full day. Um, we're gonna ask that they have a response to us by this Friday at the end of the day, so we can have a quick turnaround. We'll be reviewing those requests by modality, by school, by grade levels, and then seeing what that does to our classroom layouts, what that does to our, uh, eating in the, in the classrooms at the elementary level, um, at the middle high school level, what that does for our facilities for, for lunches, um, and class sizes. And then if we get back from break, we will work with our principals and our, uh, our staff to ensure that all health, safety, logistical measures are, are in place. If we can't accommodate it, that's when we'll also communicate that out back to parents and say, well, we can't do this, but this is what we can do. Um, and in that following week, uh, April sixth would be when kids would then come in, basically over the week after break, and then they'll, they'll come in. Um, so we don't know what that response we're gonna get, maybe these families are gonna stay, you know, we're, we know our teacher, my son Doug knows our teacher. They're gonna just stay where they are till the end of the year, or we might have a, a smooth feeling when I come back to him personally. And we'll have to just see where that all falls out. You know, the eating piece of it's gonna be a little bit tricky, uh, knowing that you have to maintain the six-foot distancing. So if you're adding more kids to the classroom at the elementary K-six level, then it's gonna be harder to do that. But I just wanna make sure the board, like, doesn't have any concerns. Uh, Dr. Katula, if you have any thoughts or concerns, uh, but we're, we're excited, you know, as we see athletics continuously, um, starting up and moving forward, um, we certainly want kids in schools who want to be here. Uh, we probably have six hundred staff members that, at least were aware that are vaccinated, um, which is, you know, six hundred out of ninety-seven. Appreciate you. Or has questions for me or any concerns, I'd love to hear it.
It should, um, Dr. Schumpert, and maybe this is for Dr. Katula as well. I assume they'll continue to further modify as we offer summer programs, because some school districts are just opening up in April, and with, with probably very intensive summer programming, so.
Yes, we, we.
I think we've been able to pivot very quickly, and, and so I think we're in good shape, but my guess is some of those will be modified for summer. Any other questions?
It's the right track.
Yes, I have to tell you, it was good to hear the big, the football announcer Friday night. All right, um, so now we have the superintendent, board communication updates, and celebration.
Yeah, first thing, um, when I provided the attachments to the board, there's been a music proposal, or not a music proposal, a proposal that was developed from athletics and it went in the music department, um, to look at our Yorkville loyalty, uh, that some of you have been, you know, grown up with, um, but there's a piece of it where it talks about you do your best boys, we'll do the rest boys. There's a proposal to change it to team, and we're just looking to make sure the board is supportive of that change so that we acknowledge, um, both gender, genders when we are competing and cheering on our Yorkville grading practices. Plus, I hear the pre-requisition.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, secondly, I want to just acknowledge, some of you already are aware, I think I shared with, um, our Yorkville preschool principal, uh, Assembly Leck, uh, was published in Edutopia, um, if you don't know, it's a, it's a very trusted, uh, source, um, that, that puts a spotlight on what's really best in education. Uh, great deal of followings, um, but she submitted a school-wide focus on choice reading. When the staff in elementary school make foster a lot of reading priority, they use these strategies to meet their goal. And was sought and published, you know, some of you have all, have read it, I'm a word very proud of, and not only her accomplishment, but her acknowledgement of the wonderful staff of our district and Yorkville grade and the brain of our, uh, of our district. Congratulations, Emily, on that.
Yes.
I'm gonna see some of our middle school leaders, Emily Hart, our local drunky and kinda kind of spelling bee, and we'll be heading up to Nationals. Uh, Will Macker Rodriguez, our moving special librarian. Uh, Wendy Rodriguez, our moving special librarian, um, was selected to represent Illinois School Libraries on that commission, um, which is wonderful. Um, then we have our spring athletics, uh, going as well at the middle school, like they're at the high school. Uh, some in murals and some in competition. And then they did a, a frigid polar plunge, and raised over five thousand dollars. So kudos to you, Lisa, and your team, celebrations. And then there was, there's been some questions from, uh, some of our community members regarding the flags learned to have staff. Really since the pandemic and the governor's, um, proclamation, um, back in, in the summer of last year, early fall, um, we have been under the governor's orders to keep them at half staff. And we've had some questions that have come up. We have recently reached out to Springfield. We did speak to the governor's office, the director of governmental affairs. Um, and Wendy Butler there told us that that is in fact the expectation of schools to keep the flags at half staff right now. So we must be here differently, or unless I'm told by someone else differently, that is our, our recommendation and guidance that we want to continue as well. And then Troy, I would see if you could give a, a quick update on the insurance committee you met last week. That would be wonderful.
Uh, sure, uh, we met last week on Wednesday, the, uh, the tenth. Uh, it's our annual, uh, review of our renewal. And we got some tremendous news. Uh, we have not had an increase in our insurance rates since the beginning of the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen school year for our medical insurance. It's been performing that well. Uh, dental, we've also, uh, anticipate, or we've been told it's going to be a zero percent increase projection on that. Uh, we did have a small increase in LTD. Um, it went up by twelve thousand dollars. That represents nineteen percent, but that's because of some past history that we've got that we're waiting to fall off the books. Uh, so we anticipate in the future, unless the use of that, uh, of LTD goes up again, we anticipate that going back down. And then the last item, vision, vision was anticipating going up by twenty three percent. However, by, uh, agreeing to increase the copay, um, which was really only five dollars, uh, overall, that they would maintain the, uh, the current cost structure on the, the vision benefits. So overall, it was a great renewal, just like we've had in the, uh, the past five years. So we, uh, kudos to everybody in the district and, um, it's worked out very well for us.
All right, Troy, do you have anything else to add to that, or?
I do not.
Okay. So this is the point where I'm going to, I'm going to drop in here for a minute and just bring up some points that, that I would like to address, that there were comments I made during that insurance committee meeting last week. Um, our consultants were discussing the performance, as you said, of our self-insured benefits. The reserve number and member utilization trended very positively, way beyond expectations and much better than the national average. Uh, just for context, where I was coming from with these statements, I'm the chairman of the Workers' Comp Trust in Illinois and its chief financial officer. And at that meeting, I stated that we have been fortunate to be in the position we are. And that stated surplus can evaporate rapidly, especially when recent performance is an outlier, which, you know, I, I believe was almost like a two percent difference in our utilization compared to the national average. I also stated that this performance, this should be taken into consideration when evaluating the financial position of the district related to our projections and negotiations, that I said that. It is the latter statement, which I certainly understand could be construed as putting downward pressure on contract negotiations in a public forum. Obviously something we should never do. I wish to apologize for this statement in no way other than in the normal course of financial disclosure, do I think this should be used as downward pressure on future negotiations. I am cognizant of the diligent efforts our teachers and all employees have made to allow the district to be one of the very few public districts to remain open while offering multiple learning modalities since the beginning of the school year. In no small measure, this has been facilitated by the continuing collaboration between the Y E A and our school administrators. I personally appreciate all the efforts that have been made and are made to offer the best possible education to the students of District one fifteen. I look forward to a positive, rewarding future negotiation next year for all involved. So hopefully they can put to rest any, um, anything that was, uh, misconstrued from what I said.
Thank you, Troy, and thank you, Dr. Brunner. Uh, Dr. Ballmer, do you also have a PSAT update?
Yes, I do. Um, in February, the Board of Education approved, uh, the PSAT and SAT testing schedule, uh, for the high school on April thirteenth and April fourteenth. Uh, last Friday, the Illinois State Board of Education issued a statement that is eliminating the PSAT ten, which our sophomore state, and the PSAT eight nine, which are freshmen, um, were scheduled to take. And so this will, um, require us to make an adjustment to the schedule. Um, on April thirteenth, our juniors will still be taking the SAT. Um, that would be an asynchronous day for our ninth, tenth, and twelfth day, twelfth graders. And as a previous plan, Wednesday the fourteenth was going to be, um, an asynchronous day for the ninth, tenth grade dent students, ninety eleven, and twelfth grade box dent students. But that is no longer needed at this time because the, there is no need for, uh, the PSAT eight nine and PSAT ten testing. Uh, and so I just wanted to bring this to the attention of the board. Um, and so, uh, we will have further communications and conversations with the high school and make sure that we are communicating in a kind of fashion.
And then starting the day prior, it'll be, it's pretty great. Both our, our staff and our parents and our kiddos get a much deserved, uh, relaxing time off.
And the snowmills.
And this one.
Surely are.
We sunshine.
Yeah, sunshine, sunshine. All right, great. Any other updates or comments?
Thanks to all of you.
All right, thank you. Um, we're not going to have an executive session, so we, we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Need adjourned? Have a good evening, everybody.
All of you.
Hi, everybody.
Well.
Sean, can you still hear me?
Yes.
Hey, is there, or Tim, is there any direction on how our away football games, is there going to be tickets available other than for parents of players? For example, if you go to Plainfield North, can other people watch?
The one is the board members.
I, I would never want to take tickets away from.
I, parents are worried about us, but then I'm sure we can get some other, like, I'm sure I can play the game.
I'll text you.
Yep, thank you.
Hope to see you there.